Mr. Billington, would you like to lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you. Some people in our school don't even know about this program. I was so glad to have this program. I have met some kids who have big, fun special needs who want to open a store. Isn't that a good special? Yeah. Sometimes we all know it's a special. This does not mean that they lack intelligence or that they can't be in this school. It means that if there's special needs, maybe extra help, it is a critical, emotional order in our school. These kids have special needs because they might be noticing their parents are at the school. Now, I haven't always been open to talking to these special needs. I didn't know much about it until I came to school and saw that most of the kids were telling me at the school. It was amazing to see that they were able to just carry on a conversation and say their stories. I've always had a special need, but I didn't realize it until I walked down the hall, hear my name being called, seeing my mother. And this is before I even started working. I've been so blessed to be one of the people to see how each one of our children will evolve in their own way. I've come so much from here to here, but if there's one thing that I've learned, it's that we have patience. Patience can be anything, especially for a patient. If that patience has led them to such a good outcome, I want to do it. It's such a wonderful thing. It's so important. Thank you, Mr. Billington. Thank you, students, and thank you, parents, for raising such wonderful, wonderful students. You can tell they have a great heart and just a willingness to serve, and that's so very much appreciated by everyone here at Hubble, as well as our entire school district and the Board of Education. Thank you very much. Dr. Schuler, I'm sorry, are there any modifications Board members wish to make to the agenda? Okay, Dr. Schuler, we're up to recognitions and achievements.
Thank you. We're really pleased this evening to have two recognitions for the Board of Education, and I'm going to start by introducing Mr. Biskin, the principal at Wheaton North, and I believe we also have Mr. Carr with us, who's the principal from the Technology Center of DuPage. So, welcome and thanks for coming tonight. And, Mr. Biskin, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be on the South Side tonight. I'm honored to be here and to share with you the recognition of one of our students, Mary Moore, George Pugllo, who is not able to be here. Mary was. Just to give a little background, 13 teams from around the state competed at the 14th Annual Illinois Postarts Invitational hosted by Illinois Restaurant Association Educational Foundation of McCormick Place in Chicago. The annual competition included a culinary contest, a management contest judged by industry professionals, post-secondary schools. The winning culinary team members were all high school seniors enrolled in TCD's Culinary History Arts Hospitality Year Program. Mary was one of those teams. Congratulations.
I brought with me my friend, Erin Sheed, who's a daughter. Oh, thank you.
That was fabulous. I was there. There. Oh. Congratulations. (laughing) That's okay. And I notice, Mr. Biskin moves on with this one. I do also want to mention, I think, Mrs. Intahar, Mr. Vroman, and I had the great pleasure of actually joining TCD for a wonderful evening just a couple of weeks ago, and we got to personally, and Dr. Rammer was there as well, got to personally sample some of the food that was prepared certainly by our students as well as a number of other TCD students. Unbelievable. Unbelievable. So, I see why they won.
Very, very much so. And, from my standpoint, I'd also like to acknowledge and recognize the fact that our principal, TCD, he does a great job. Our students are well taken care of there. And I think it's a great example of how students connect with their passion, follow it, and they're able to answer questions when they graduate high school. What are you able to do? They have skills. They know what they want to do. So, that's a good one. Max St. George, ladies and gentlemen. Max St. George is a senior of Ullmark who is the state champion in backstroke for board swimming. At the state championship meet at Nutrour High School, Max won the 100-meter backstroke with a time of 48.07, crosstalk 48.21. Max then went on to win the state title coming home, third swimmer in Ullmark's history, to win an individual title in the final in swimming, 48.20, which placed him more than a second place. I'm very proud of Max. Along with all of the other school athletes on our school, we give a lot of time and effort. We dedicate, sacrifice a lot, and we do our best. Max is a good athlete. Very, very proud of him. Thank you. That's in seconds. I'm sure Max will be, Max will be attending too in swimming, so it's great and awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay, there are no, nobody has signed up to speak at public comments on agenda items, so we will move right to the superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler.
Thank you. I've got just four things that I wanted to mention this evening under my report. The first is that in your green packets at the last committee of the whole meeting, when Mr. Farley did the presentation on alternate sources of revenue, one of the things that we talked about were issues around, like, naming rights, selling corporate sponsorships, and one of the follow-up items that we had identified for the board was to at least bring you so that you were familiar with them, what our current policies are that do relate to those things. So, this is not for discussion tonight, but just in preparation for future discussion, we did pull those, and I wanted you to have them to start to look through, kind of in preparation for the follow-up on that. Also wanted to mention, this Saturday, actually, at Hubble, where we are currently, the Early Learning Collaborative that we've talked to the board about a couple of times is partnering with District 200 to host an Early Learning Day of Play. It starts at 9:00, I think goes from 9:00 until 12:00, and there are a whole host of early learning providers within the community will be here to offer a resource fair for parents, as well as to just offer some fun, interactive activities for our future District 200 students and our earliest of learners. It'll be a great opportunity for us to share with them a little bit of the programming and service that we have through Jefferson, as well as just to continue to educate our community about the importance of early learning and the importance of making sure that kids come to school kindergarten-ready. So, I do want to thank Dr. Pampless, Zelaya Akino, for all their work with the Early Learning Collaborative in planning that. It was something we had talked about earlier in the year with the Community Engagement Board Committee, that we had identified a desire to do that, and that's going to happen this Saturday, again, from 9:00 to 12:00. You are absolutely welcome to join us for any portion of that if you have a little bit of time. Two other things that I wanted to mention, finance-related, you may have followed out of the newspapers, the state has very recently passed a kind of a budget solution, what they've turned a budget solution that will address kind of the immediate shortfall in state funds this year. That's going to impact, based on what we understand, both our general state aid payment as well as mandated categorical payments. The overall, kind of across-the-line reduction is a little over 2% within the state. For us, that means, in this current-year budget, we will get about $225,000 less in categorical payments than what we had projected for revenue, about $155,000 in GSA payments, so it's about half of the general state aid payment as well. So, just to be aware of that, that that's about a $400,000 revenue hole that we're going to see this year based on where we are. I do want to want to report out, though, that even with that hole here at the end of the year, even with the delay in state payments, we will, at our low cash point in the year, which is always end of May, we will still have about $5 million in fund balance, so we're not projecting a need for any type of short-term borrowing, as some districts are needing to do with the sudden news. And again, that's not a lot of money by any means. I think Board members have pointed it out, but it certainly does reinforce the need for us to make sure that we maintain that fund balance that we have. If not for that fund balance policy that the board has and that we've adhered to, you could find yourself in a position this year where we were paying to borrow money to cover short-term needs until the state gets caught up. So, again, just, I wanted to mention those two things. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention, just a couple of legislative updates from very recently on Tuesday night, so last night of this week, I had an opportunity to attend a legislative forum sponsored by the Regional Office of Education. It included a number of different elected state officials, two of them that do have a portion of our district, and Senator Naivo and Representative Breen. The discussions really covered a host of issues from, you know, from pension reform to what they're anticipating in terms of Senate Bill 1, and just two things I did want to highlight. All of the representatives that were at this forum indicated that they do not see a cost-shift bill coming in the spring, a pension cost-shift bill. There's not been any discussion. If it happened this spring, it would be, it would happen really very abruptly, and obviously, it doesn't mean it can't happen within the state, but there's not been a bill filed yet, and they are quickly approaching the point where any bills that were going to get out onto the floor for action in this session would need to have been in committee, and there is no such bill. So, it does not mean that a cost-shift bill is not coming to us eventually, but it doesn't appear to be happening imminently. Senate Bill 1, again, that's the new version of Senate Bill 16. Also doesn't appear to be a whole lot of movement currently around that bill. The House has designated a task force that's looking into the issue of school funding. That task force is really heavily dominated by suburban representatives, many of which cover our district, and again, they have indicated that the House would not likely even consider any type of funding reform bill until that work has happened, and that's not likely going to be done until at least into the summer. So, nonetheless, we are still working very diligently on some communications around Senate Bill 1. Erica Mett today actually hosted a meeting with about 10 different school districts that came to District 200, their communications representatives, to do some work together around some of the communications on Senate Bill 1, and at this point, we are planning to put out just a written communication very soon, kind of be prepared if we need to call you to action again, as we did last time, but are really waiting until we see a little bit more movement around Senate Bill 1 before we would likely do kind of a call-to-action series of community sessions as we did last time. And then the last thing legislatively I wanted to mention is, I had an opportunity today with two other area superintendents to visit with Congressman Roscom in his office here in West Chicago, and we visited with him to talk a little bit about No Child Left Behind and the bill that's in the House that would bring some reform to that. He did indicate that he thinks it's very likely that that bill will move through the session here in the spring, and so there does appear to be some confidence that we will get a new version of the Elementary-Secondary Education Act, which, that's a good thing. That is very much needed. I realize both the House and the Senate versions of those are slightly different, but it does appear that there's likely some movement around that in the spring, which would be a good thing versus what we have now with No Child Left Behind. So, that's it.
Any questions for Dr. Schuler? Dr. Schuler, do we know kind of the guts of that bill that's going through the United States House? So, we know that, I mean, anything probably would be better, but do we have any misgivings? Everything looks good?
We do, and again, the House and the Senate versions, slightly different, and I think what's ultimately going to happen is they're both very likely to pass their own bills, send it into, you know, kind of a joint committee to negotiate the solution. Probably the one thing that's in the House bill that's of a little bit of concern is there's some discussion around portability of Title I funds. Title I is probably our biggest grant, and portability of those funds would enable potentially an individual to take those funds out of district into perhaps a private school, into another setting. So, it's kind of like a version of a voucher-type bill, and so we did talk to him about the fact that that would be of concern to us, and, you know, again, we're kind of regardless of your beliefs about vouchers or tax credit bills or any of that, the bottom line is there's just too much discussion right now around school finance when you put all of these things together between state reform, that discussion, there's just too much, too much funding discussion that doesn't help us in any way. So, we did, we did talk to him about that, but I do think overall, it's better than what we have.
I've got one comment, a question. The, you know, I've had the opportunity to talk to a lot of people lately about cost containment and so on, and one of the issues that keeps coming up is the transporting of homeless people, homeless students, I should say, particularly as it relates to when you look at the bill list, the cab fare, I'll call it, and so on. Does that ever come up in any sessions anywhere that, you know, that there's got to be a better way to do that or something? You know, it's just, it's such a costly item when you have that condition, you know, it seems to be a bigger number than I believe at times.
Yeah, actually, that came up just at the meeting yesterday on Tuesday with our Illinois representatives. It came up really under just the discussion of a number of the mandates, the unfunded mandates that we have, that's one of them, right? And again, we're, again, it's almost any of those mandates, when you take it in isolation, there probably was a very valid reason behind why somebody originally considered that idea, but when you look at them together in aggregate and look at the cost impact on districts, that's one that we certainly talked to them about. Now, that really is a federal requirement that's flowing through the state, but again, that is one of the mandates we talked about.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Schuler, but I do believe also that if we outplace a student and that student is outplaced out of state, we must fly the family for visits there, and, you know, and we bear a lot of cost when it comes to that as well, if I understand it right. So, so there are a lot of, and that's by law, we must do that, so many visits per year. So, when we outplace a student, which we rarely do, but we are doing more and more of it, that all of those extra things, you know, add up because we fly, as I understand it, like the whole family. Am I right? The whole family, or maybe the mother and father at least, but, you know, so if you're flying somebody two, two times a year? Yeah. So, so that's another cost, that transportation cost that adds up, that's very hidden and unrecognized a lot of times, but it happens. Any other questions? And then we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have 11 items on the consent agenda. Acceptance of a gift from the Emerson PTA, acceptance of gifts from the Monroe PTA, approval of revised policy 7.100, health examinations, approval of middle school science standards, approval to post-middle school health standards, approval to post-high school AP human geography curriculum, approval of the 2015-2016 fee schedule, approval of the resolution authorizing an interfund loan from Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Education Fund, approval of bills payable in payroll, approval of minutes, March 11th, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed-session minutes prior to November 13th as allowable by law, approval of the personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative-certified classified and non-union staff. Are there any items that Board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Okay, then we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Sorry. By Mr. Vroman?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gambiani. Is there any discussion? I was looking at Mr. Gambiani. Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to point out that there are 50 Chromebooks in the, the gifts from the two PTAs that I previously did not observe in the past, so I'm glad to see we're Chromebooking up.
I would like to point out that there's a piano as well. So, in all the talk about technology, it's nice to see something for the arts. So, to call Mr. Matheson, where would we be without our PTA?
And I know this question has been asked before, but were there any comments on the posted policy or the posted standards?
No.
Okay, and those were posted for 30 days?
Yeah. Okay.
Just one other comment I noted in the proposed fee schedule for next year, that it's the fifth consecutive year where we're not raising fees. So, in all the talk about taxpayers and financial responsibility, that's part of it, and so by holding those steady for five years, well, it's part of the now to what we're trying to do.
I'd just like to make an observation. I reviewed the proposed curriculum for the human geography AP course. That is fascinating. Can I join up? Can I participate in that? I applaud the staff for accepting that. That's a great course.
You do have to take the test, though, if you're going to sign up for the course.
And I don't think I could pass the new eighth-grade science class. I was reading those curriculums, and I was like, oh my, I don't know if I could pass this class.
I would like to point out that there's a piano as well. So, in all the talk about technology, it's nice to see something for the art. So, to call Mr. Matheson, where would we be without our PTA?
And I know this question has been, um, asked before, but were there any comments on the posted policy or the posted, uh, standards?
No.
Okay, and those were posted for 30 days?
Yeah. Okay.
All right, just one other comment I noted in the, uh, proposed fee schedule for next year, that it's the fifth consecutive year where we're not raising fees. So, in all the talk about taxpayers and financial responsibility, that's part of it. It's up by holding those steady for five years, but I was part of the now to what we're trying to do.
I'd just like to make an observation. I reviewed the, uh, proposed curriculum for the human geography AP course. That is fascinating. I, can I, can I join up? Can I participate in that? That, uh, I applaud, uh, the staff for accepting that. That's a great course.
You do have to take the test though, if you're going to sign up for the course.
And I don't think I could pass the new eighth grade science class. I was reading those curriculums and I was like, oh my, I don't know if I could pass this class.
But if you do sign up, we're taking credit for it on the dashboard for increasing participation, it may be.
One other quick question I've got on the fee schedule. You know, again, I, I'm glad that we're doing what we're doing, but when we talk about alternative revenues and so on, um, you know, we are, we are keeping these the same, you know, and it's been true for five years, you know, that, there's, that troubles me a little bit. You know, I think it's something that as we move forward here, we're going to have to be looking at this as a, as an alternative source of revenue. Uh, you know, again, it's, it's just makes education more possible, but that's the real world there too. So, uh, you know, and I noticed and I saw some emails, uh, regarding fee, you know, even if it, like the technology fee, for instance, doesn't raise a lot of money, uh, but, you know, it's something I think as we move forward in the next year, I'd like to look at that more closely, uh, particularly with any of these other things we talked about earlier that are starting.
I think that'd be a good item for the Finance Committee to put on the, the agenda to look at, um, either starting late spring or early next year. I think that there's a good analysis. It could be done to look at a few aspects of the, the fee schedule. I think if we're going to open it up, we ought to look at a few pieces of it. Good idea.
Uh, when we were setting the agenda, we, we talked with Dr. Schuler a little bit about that and, you know, and even some of the fees are, are more heavily laden toward site ends and, and, you know, personnel costs. And so, maybe those fees should automatically go up by, you know, the CPI or something like that. But, but again, that's a discussion that, that we'll let, uh, the Finance Committee, uh, kind of look at and tell us what's best to do and, and, you know, go from there. But I, I think maybe it's time that we need to raise that baseball fee or something like that. So, alrighty. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Mrs. Sender, will you call the roll please? And board members vote online?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes, motion passes. We have a few action items tonight. The first is to adopt a resolution authorizing the non-reemployment of full-time first, second, and third-year, non-tenured staff. Dr. Schuler, would you like to share some information with us about this in the public?
Sure. And, uh, I think important to, to note on this, um, the staff members being released through this resolution tonight were staff members that were hired on a one-year contract. So, uh, as we've got employees that were perhaps are out on the leave or a number of other reasons, there are some folks that we hire, understanding that it's a, it's a one-year position, but yet you still are required by law to, uh, take this action to formally, uh, terminate that contract even though they were, they were hired on those terms. So, this does not go deeper into, uh, a reduction in force this year, I would think that.
May we have, um, a motion please? At a second?
So moved.
Second. Move on, Mr. Paulson. Seconded by Mrs. Swanson, is there any discussion? Mrs. Sender, will you call the roll please?
Yes.
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 Yes, um, so likewise on this resolution, uh, we have a number of part-time staff members that, um, kind of year over year, if the amount that we will need that person, the percentage of, uh, employment status that they are is not entirely known at this time, um, we, we take this action just so that we make sure that, that we have the ability to hire them back at, at whatever is needed. So, this is not every part-time staff member within the district, but these are the positions that, uh, may not yet be entirely known either due to, to, to student needs, enrollment in certain programs. So, um, again, the board is just, uh, covering yourself at this point to ensure that, um, we are not overstaffed for next year if you don't take this action.
Okay, may we have a motion please?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Swanson?
Uh, second.
Seconded by Mr. Gambiani, is there any discussion?
I have one clarification on this. The, this is, anyone on these lists could be re-engaged in the following year. Correct. It's real identifying positions that, that are filled now, either temporary or whatever in both of these, these votes, is that correct?
Um, more, more so in the first one, when you, you talk about temporary position, uh, Jim, the second one that you just, uh, that we're considering right now, these are part-time positions where, um, let's say you have a, um, a, a teacher that's working at a .5. We're not sure if we'll need that position exactly at a .5. You need to take this now, otherwise you've automatically rehired them for next year at the same level or higher.
Are there any other questions? Mrs. Sender, will you call the roll please?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Okay. Now, we have, uh, written reports, the monthly financial reports, and employer requests. Are there any questions on the written reports from board members? Mr. Paulson?
Real quick question on the financial report. I, I'm just curious if there's anything we're seeing. We've talked a lot about the revenue side in terms of, uh, all the bad things. Is there anything we're seeing on the expenditure side as we turn through the year that is, you know, caught our attention, that concerns us? Uh, we are, obviously, the, uh, health insurance, we continue to monitor that. Our claims are down over the prior year, which is good. Our, our X is up a little bit, which is something we're tracking. But we are keeping our eye on health insurance. Outplaced tuition, I think Mrs. Penopoulos talked a little bit about that. Uh, the head number is going up again, uh, so we're keeping an eye on that as well. Uh, you know, Mrs. Penopoulos is, Dr. Penopoulos is well aware of, uh, that and keeps a steady eye on it, but, uh, we are seeing those costs go up, not only for the enrollment factor, but, uh, you know, the number of students participating, but the costs those folks charge for those programs.
On that point, I noticed the increased cost on the, uh, for tuition in that regard. Is this a trend that's being experienced by other districts as well? Is, uh, and do we have an understanding why this is happening?
Um, other districts are experiencing it. Um, the state also, um, is updating us with, um, the increased needs of the students and then obviously the placements that coincide with them. Um, you know, I think the pieces that I'm hearing even within our district right now is just the increased number of students who are dealing with some of those internal issues such as anxiety. And so, um, even our numbers of hospitalizations has increased. We're certainly keeping an eye on it and we're looking at ways that we can intervene and, um, be a little bit more proactive, but oftentimes we're just seeing the, um, severity of the needs of students are increasing across the board.
I've, I've seen this number grow way above normal CPI-type increases on every district I worked with for the last 10 years. Uh, it's, uh, you know, it's a runaway thing. And I think the other side of it is the number of students that are enrolled as well. And, you know, there's either earlier identification or, you know, more needs or, you know, whatever, you know, that, uh, you know, that cost is explained. You know, I, I assume that we do analysis where we can, whether we have these in or out for the district, uh, for that.
Are there any other questions on the monthly written reports? Thank you. Are there any reports from board members, first board committee reports? Any committees have a report to give?
I'll just give a quick update on the facility committee. Um, so we've probably kind of broken the process up into three parts, focus areas one, two, and three. Uh, the facilities committee has met probably a hand, three or four times already and we've kind of spent a lot of time focusing on Area 1, which is the deferred maintenance physical conditions, infrastructure piece of it. And I think we're getting pretty close to the next presentation and trying to prioritize Years 1, 2, and 3. Uh, just to give the heads up for the board, we've also kind of prioritized the Year 0, which is this summer. Uh, a handful of items which we feel are going to be really critical, they could have an impact on keeping schools open next summer. So, something that we might be bringing, or likely bringing to the table in the next month or so, it's a next year budget item, I believe, but, uh, just a heads up that that could happen. Um, and then, uh, in terms of focus areas 2 and 3, which is the RFQ for architects that we put out, 12 firms submitted, um, four firms have been shortlisted to the final four. Um, interview on April 21st, Tuesday, April 21st, so the committee is a broad-range committee that we're going to have interviewing the four firms. The four firms are legged architects, of course, uh, our current architect, Perkins and Will, which is a big national firm, you know, based in Chicago, DLR Group, who is based in Omaha, but has a significant presence across the country, but also here in Chicago. And then, uh, a firm called FGM, which is based at Oak Brook. So, very, very impressed, I've looked at those seminals for the first time tonight, very impressed with the organization and some of the prominence of some of the people on the team. So, we're going to have a pretty good, uh, representative of both local and national expertise come present to us on the 21st, so I think it's a very exciting opportunity we're going to have.
One comment on that. I'd like to make sure that, uh, whenever possible on this contract or any, any contracts we do, that we give, uh, kind of local presence, some part of the evaluation. Uh, you know, I, I feel that, uh, you know, the community, you know, spending the dollars with our own, within our own community is, is a good thing. I, you know, I'm not, you know, particularly if, you know, we have quote equal, equal choices, uh, you know, I'd like to give, give thought to that as, you know, as we make our decision or give it consideration, I guess would be a better way to say it.
I, I agree with you. I don't think in terms of the companies, that we're going to see that there's no architecture firms that do schools that are based in either one or two districts, but there are some people, I believe, on the seminals that are residents within our district, so that maybe it's a different way to address that.
Or even within our state. I mean, you know, what I'm hearing about, we're talking to people in Omaha, I'm a little, you know, makes me a little warm, less warm in my heart when we, you know, we, we have the needs in Illinois as we do and, you know, I, I think that's kind of a responsibility to our taxpayers, that we give that thought. And again, I, you know, if everything is equal, you know, I mean, that would be a tipping point to me, but if, you know, if someone has a skill level that is something that is so much better, we have to deal with that too. So, we'd give it, we'd give a thought as the, as we report. Other board committees, are we moving on from that one? We're under the other board committees, right? Board committee? Yeah. Uh, we've had the opportunity to meet, I think it was between now and the last meeting, uh, with the, uh, Park District and ourselves, and we had discussion about, uh, potentially accessing or having, giving some guidance to, uh, the city of Wheaton in this case about some TIF monies that are left over. Um, I, I passed on a letter that I received as president of a different organization, to Dr. Schuler, which is the city's plan to use some of those monies. I just sent that to you. And, and, uh, you know, we're, we would like to see, you know, some of those dollars potentially come to the district. I think it will be an uphill battle. Uh, there is discussion also at the city level about funding the downtown plan at Wheaton, Wheaton. And, you know, part of that discusses other TIFs and, you know, we want to be on top of that as well. So, there's, you know, uh, I don't know, Fosner, you have any other comment on that?
No, just, um, just that the meeting really talked about, um, being very collaborative with the city, wanting to basically just have more of a voice or a seat at the table. Obviously, we technically have a, a seat on the TIF advisory board, but, you know, there's substantial, uh, decisions are, are not really made by us. And so, we have certainly been very productive in our collaboration in the past with the Park District and the city when it comes to other community, uh, projects of interest, specifically Mariano's and Hubble comes to mind, but other things as well. And, you know, it's, uh, good to remember with the TIF district has done a lot of good, uh, but, but it is, um, you know, diversion, not in a bad way, that's, that's the way the mechanism is set up, of tax dollars from other, you know, public entities. So, when the TIF has kind of run its purpose and been successful, um, it's good to think about, well, if monies are left there, yes, uh, that entity has the right to do what they want with it, but, uh, if you're making decisions on the public good, there's other tax embodies whose public good perhaps should be considered in. So, I think that's really was the gist of our, our, um, overtures to the city is we just would like to be a collaborative partner in discussion on that, as we have been in the past, uh, for some of the other projects. But, uh, certainly what's good for our community as a whole is always good for our school district, but good for the community as a whole to realize decisions are made as to how those dollars, tax dollars are spent.
Are there any other committee reports from board members? Okay, how about other reports from board members?
Mrs. Swanson?
I would just like to report, this is my last official business meeting, so, in case you guys aren't aware, but, uh, I, you know, I, I, and I will have more to say, don't worry, I'll have more to say, uh, at my unofficial, you know, the, the, yes, committee of the whole and then, you know, student, yes, the reorganizational meeting and such, but, you know, just even reading through tonight, the curriculum, uh, you know, the standards, the geography course, thinking about the technology and there are just so many things that, you know, I see upcoming future discussions, social, emotional learnings, professional, it's caught in the architects. It's kind of like reading a really exciting book and somehow the end of it, you, you don't have, you know? And so, I have to say, this has been a wonderful experience and it, I'm going to be so excited to see where the district continues to go because I feel like we're just at the point of some very exciting new things, more so than, you know, in my 16 years on the board. There've certainly been interesting things, but, but, but in terms of being able to like take those steps forward, I feel like this is one of those times where the district is poised to do that. And so, um, it's kind of like, huh, need to lead the train while it's doing that, but I think you, it's, you're going a good direction, so congratulations. And I just had to find a way to make this meeting longer. I couldn't let you beat my, uh, my record, no.
Well, Mrs. Swanson, you know how much we miss you and, uh, we're just hoping we can move the district forward as much as you have in your tenure because, uh, we've certainly come a long way and, and have truly benefited from your leadership. Thank you.
I, I still have time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have two topics for future discussion, the social, social, emotional learning report and the professional development report. Uh, our upcoming meetings, there will be a chat with the board at Wheaton-Warble South High School next Thursday, April 16th, from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m., and the public is welcome, uh, although we do hold that at the, at the high school so that we get input from the high school students as well. Our next, uh, committee of the whole meeting will be April 22nd at the School Service Center at 7:30 p.m. And then also, for those of you who would like to attend, this is the meeting Mrs. Swanson just alluded to, there'll be a special meeting of the Board of Education to see the new board members and elected officers for the next two years on April 29th at 5:30 p.m. at the School Service Center. Our next regular meeting will be May 13th at 7:30 p.m. at the School Service Center. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in public comment on a non-agenda item? Yeah? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn since there's no further action to come before the board in open session. We will need to adjourn to closed session for the purposes of discussing personnel items, and no action is expected following the closed session. Um, may we have a motion to adjourn the meeting to closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Swanson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roman. Mrs. Sender, will you call the roll please?
Uh, I'm not sure. Yes, yes.
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 Yes, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.